Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to address masks today. A mandate is for during the school day, as I don't recognize that they're being part of the school day. Masks are optional. Just ask that everybody respect each other's face. So item number one, we will do our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to the first item, which is the approval of the minutes, I would like to just read a brief statement. I'm making a brief statement. My name is Kate Roy, and I am serving in my 17th year as a volunteer elected school committee member. I would like to explain how the meeting will work. This is not a public hearing. There will however be an opportunity for public access to address the school committee during that time. That's during the public access portion of our agenda. We will not be responding during this session. Each contributor will be afforded three minutes maximum to speak after being recognized by the chair. That's me. As the chair, I'm setting public access portion of the meeting to 30 minutes. I would like to remind all attendees and elected school committee representatives that the mask mandate is a mandate that came down from DESI and Commissioner O'Reilly, after giving the authority to do so by the Board of Education, which is appointed by the governor. It is not a Sturbridge School Committee mandate, as some of you believe, as seen on social media and have you believed that. In fact, this building administration, Board of House School Committee, was prepared to follow any direction that DESI was offering. The previous direction that DESI had prior to this mandate was to strongly encourage it. We are constantly assessing our local data, and we are prepared to support what they were handing down. Personally, I'd like to say that I'm not in favor of the mask mandate. I'm in favor of parental choice and always will be. As an elected school committee member, I took an oath to act in the best interest of the district, which includes balancing a budget, setting policy, and sometimes taking actions that are contrary to my personal beliefs. Any suggestion on the school committee's part to stand down the mandate could not only risk losing licensure of our administration and staff, but also lose our state Chapter 70 funding, which goes directly against the oath that we took as elected school committee members. Expect the meeting to be appropriate. We'll not tolerate any rudeness towards any member of our staff, administration, or school committee members. Thank you. So, next up on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion that we approve the minutes for June 7. Any discussion on them? On the favor? Opposed? Abstained? Karen, I have to abstain. I just have a question. All right, I will hand it to Ms. Boyd for the financial report and the bus trailer memo.
Yeah, so a couple things wrapping up last year, we're talking a little bit about this year. We have the final report from last fiscal year in the packet. I don't think it's any surprise, I think we talked for a number of months about the significant funds we turned back to the town, which is fantastic that we went into there free cash because of either federal grants that we could pay for things that we normally wouldn't pay for, or some things that just did not happen to the capacity that they were able to do because of the constraints we have. So, that's your bottom line there. There's no questions on the general fund, but I'd like to go to the last page, which is highlight where we ended with our grants, which you remember that CDR's COVID opening, we said we had to spend that by June 30, so we did. SR1, we actually, our goal was to spend it all by June 30, but it can carry over. So that left with $44,000 of SR1 that we did start spending over the summer. And then SR2 and SR3, we haven't started with. We also had that other COVID prevention, 32,000. We spent that by June 30, as we were supposed to. And your summer, $24,000 of summer, if you will call, we got that before we even started last year, trying to get a little summer activity before opening, and then it did go through this summer. So that will be spent by the time we come back next time. We did a breakdown, spent all of that, did some awesome things. With your SR1 funds, that $44,000 that was there, about the $20,000 to $25,000 has been spent already on new filters, where filters were appropriate in this building, because in some areas they're not, with the ionizers and supplies to get the vehicle. The reason I'm concentrating there, does anybody have any other questions on budget before we talk about the memo here? Awesome. So as you can see, I included the email, and I'm not sure if any of you have had the opportunity of enjoying to take a ride down the last year to the DPW slash bus area. So, pre-COVID, there was a very small office that housed the bus coordinator, and the drivers would be in and out to give their keys, to drop off time cards. Also, the mechanic was there. It was very tight quarters. The town was very gracious to use some of their federal COVID money to put a portable trailer right outside the highway building. It's been there for the whole year. It is very nice size. An active space for all the bus riders actually to meet in an open space. It had been a couple of officers, offices. It served its purpose well. I was not aware of how long the contract was. Turns out the contract was indeed one year. And as you can see here, virtually the DPW is requesting that we consider funding it to continue at least for the start of the year. It is, going forward, it is actually a certainly much better space. The Sturbridge DPW is very gracious and allows us to share their space. We house all the buses there. The mechanic uses the actual facility, and lifts and shares boards with the DPW. But as far as our 40-plus drivers in and out, in between runs, it really has been quite important to have a trailer. So, my suggestion right now is to at least get through this year. As I said, we've got about $20,000 left of SR1 funds that my goal was to spend by the end of last year, and we did not. So we have that. Of the SR2 plans and the staffing, I think Kathy may have one more position, or are we all locked in? Right, another one open. But the ones we've built so far, we actually are coming in $15,000, $15,000 to $20,000 below what we thought we'd be.
You're correct. It's only got a lot of potential.
Okay, that's all right. So I think for everyone, comfort, motherhood, and safety at this point in time, I would suggest that we, because the SR funds are legitimate funds to spend on these type of things, that we fund the trailer for the rest of this calendar year. I would come back, sorry, for this fiscal year. I'd like to fund it virtually, get through the school year. But we can have conversations in February, when we're building next year's budget, about whether, and maybe we'll take a little note trip if we can see the facilities, whether it's something we would like to have there ongoing. And if so, I would say we would put it in the regular budget request and see if it works. If the town wants to support it, really budget, or if not, we're not going to. We certainly don't want to give up educational resources for it, for the general budget. But I think we can afford to do a little bit of this this year. So my recommendation would be to vote, or to allow, it's the 2815 for 10 months at this point in time. So $28,150 from SR1 and 2 to fund the continued use of the bus trailer.
I would entertain a motion. We'll have a motion on the floor, and seconded, and then we have discussion. So I would entertain a motion that we appropriate 2815 and 2015 and zero cents stuff, 2815 for 10 months from SR1 and 2 to fund the continued use of the trailer. So, in a second? Was there a second? No. I'll second it. Okay, now you can discuss it. Okay. How much do we know? How much do we need to buy?
Actually, the DPW director said he would look into that. It's certainly much more than a year's worth at least, but he would look into that. So it's something that we could consider when we're coming next year budget time.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was gonna be my question, but that seems like that's an extraordinary amount of money each month. $2,800 is a really nice, shiny apartment somewhere, a lot nicer than Sturbridge. I'm just curious.
Yeah, it does build up. It's a pretty good size. It's easily the size of probably two classrooms, just to kind of give you a feel. But definitely, before we get to the next budget cycle, should take a ride down this.
Yeah, that's good. What's in there? Because I feel like I see in between the high school and the preschool, I see people in their buses, parked in various spots, dunking doors and the small buses, the back of the bus there. And I was curious, like, how many people would they be?
It's a space well in there. I mean, all day long, you have two people there all day long. Your bus coordinator, an assistant who drives, also a trainer. And then the mechanic kind of spends time between the actual garage and their working paperwork, et cetera. So there are four small offices, or three small offices, and actually a school and restroom. And then it's one big open space, which allows people to come in and respect each other's distances every single morning. All the drivers are there about the same time when they're getting their keys, doing, they have to do pre and post-trip documentation every single day. So it's a flow of people. It's allowed them to actually have some meetings that in the past, they've always had to go down to the public safety complex to use the meeting room when they wanted to have safety.
Deb, how long is it paid for through right now if we?
This is the last one.
September, oh, yeah, September.
They will, they decided to hold up, because I think it's like the 23rd of the month they're coming home from. But when you look at it, and it looks fairly long-term. They installed ramps, they kind of did some landscaping around there. So there's a handicap ramp as well as steps. So it was a pretty decent operation to install one.
Is there any other place that these SR1 and SR2 funds, understanding that these are grants, these are COVID grants, they're not necessarily our budget? Is there anywhere else that they could be used? Are we maxed out on PPE to testing all of that? I kind of have.
I think we're in very good shape on PPE. And if you recall, last year, every vendor in Sturbridge, DPW, so we have masks and can't sanitize using a furniture.
Or bowls.
Yeah. So we made sure at the end of last year, not knowing what we were coming back to, that we were very well stocked in PPE and filters and cleaners, probably for the full year. So that's in very good shape. We did present to you a plan that included some staffing to provide the extra support that we thought was going to be needed coming back, and some technology. So we're going to keep plugging away at the technology. Side note, the new Chromebook is smart boards. It used to be it takes six months to get Chromebooks, now it's six months to get a smart board. And that was kind of our plan to use some of the Chromebook. I think we built a good plan. As I mentioned, Kathy, we actually came under a little bit in the staffing plan. So I think we're in good shape, certainly. That does not mean if you don't approve this, that in a couple of years, because that, it has life of September 23.
23, okay.
So we certainly have plenty of time to find other ways to spend a few months.
And we did talk about how when we got through mid-year this spring, we talked about SR and those grants. Where are those dollars put in the right places, as we thought they should be? So that would also be an opportunity as we plan for next September, you know, getting the feedback from Kathy, of those positions especially. I'm going to look for those positions. So the roughly like $28,000, $29,000, what does it leave the balance of SR1 and SR2 funds to be used by September 23?
Well, SR1 would be closed out. And SR1 actually only has a life until September of '22.
So in the year.
So the other, there's about, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I'm sorry. There, I think SR2 is around $200,000. SR3 is double that, over $400,000. So it allows us to build a plan. When we talked about staffing, we were concerned we don't want to build a clip and bring on too much staff in three years, not be able to continue. So we've got time to work through what we think of the extra supports that we decide here at budget time, whether we want to continue.
So was in there over the summer time?
Well, we had activity over the summer. There were summer schools that, there were grants that paid for head school, summer school, in transportation. In a normal year, which this has not been the last two summers, we have been able to decrease the cost to run, the cost to Sturbridge Transportation by having a contact with the YMCA. So there is activity over the summer. There's also cleaning of the buses, inspections of the buses, and there's in-service training. It's not every day like it is during this school year.
But it's mostly just the bus coordinator and the mechanic, kind of the day-to-day, and then the drivers come in the morning?
Yes. Unless they're running game services. You know, yeah, I'm presenting with the DPW director, and requested, I think, for starters, we, if we prefer, we can just.
Substitute.
We could just, right, we can do just a few months and see how it goes.
Just a point of discussion, my question, but I just think calling this COVID thing is just extending something that I feel is a slippery slope, like when is the end in sight? The distancing thing doesn't really hold up. There isn't, you know, breakout cases going on right now. So I would say, I feel for the bus people, and I would like to provide something. I think it's too much money. I think they should move towards proposing a permanent structure that can accommodate more people for life. Like, right before this happened, they dealt with it. It didn't really have anything to do with, you know, 20 people in a room together. It was just, I mean, it's nice to have, obviously, but I think calling it this and using those funds is not something I want. Any further discussion?
I have a question. I have one more question. When would the discussions to do a little permanent structure, like we have? Like, so, because I'm thinking of doing substitute motion for a certain timeframe, like less than a year. Like, what's reasonable?
Well, anything more permanent couldn't happen until next year, because no one is budgeting such. So we can certainly start having the conversations during the budget process with the finance committee, whether it's part of our budget or just part of kind of a separate section in the budget. But I don't see it being permanently being able to fund before then. But those would be kind of regular conversations.
And this structure has to be a school committee funded?
No, and you said that the town.
Other empty buildings that the town has that, I don't know if there are.
I need to be where the buses are, exactly. And we do take up a lot of space in our area, from time to time, drive down. And I will say, the DPW definitely, the DPW guys are very gracious to have us down there and share the facility, those buses, and we've increased them over the last couple of years. So you've got pretty much every day, 16 to 18, either buses or staff vehicles while the buses are on the road, and a lot of activity.
And during social distancing, are they standing outside waiting to go in to get their keys?
They did spend, they certainly were very conscious and very concerned of trying to make sure they maintained distances. So if there were small group meetings, they could fit it indoors. They tried to have larger groups.
I don't mean meetings, I mean.
And when they're going through, they're going through certain socially distancing.
So I guess my question is, if this trailer goes away, they're back to an office, is there space for people to be coming in and getting their keys and doing their paperwork? Or are they outside doing this? How is it?
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly no structure there. And it was kind of, it's kind of in the middle of the garage. So, you know, you kind of almost need a crossing guard to be out there making sure, because they don't know entering into the garage for what is in the small office that is adjourned. They actually, the door opens, there's a door between the DPW administrative system and the small office. Well, it's month-to-month at this point in time. So the company is absolutely willing to, the town has been paying month-to-month. So there was an original plan of 12 months, but, you know, as you can see, Bush Jackson was asking for at least the first few months. And I just thought if we could get through this school year, we didn't talk to finance committee going forward, but as he said in his last sentence there, is even six more months would be appreciated. And we will, we will, but I'm not. Worst case scenario is still Jill, because we should know about that. Would we be able to get some town support to continue to pay for it, or do something?
Do, is there something to say when we would have that number for the purchase price?
He didn't. I mean, and I can be a bit.
Say, I think we certainly can, especially if we don't want to be shorter ways. This figure would really help us to know what this is.
That would be so.
Then, you know, even if it was just a few months, I would advocate for that. The DPW helped us and the town secure a grant for a sidewalk paving. In the back, that was, I think, $35,000, because also DPW did all the line re-mounting. We would have to pay, Tanta's was an example of a company, 50 million dollars to be able to pay. So maybe some kind of compromise of at least a few months, so that we can plan at least getting the date or the months. Somebody want to make a substitute motion, or do we want to move the question?
I'd like a substitute motion to pay monthly through the end of January.
Is there a second? So the motion, substitute motion is to pay 2815 for SR1 and 2 through January, the January payment, so essentially that's September. Five months, is that correct? I have it correct. Five months. Towards the appropriated to fund the January. Any more discussion? On the favor? Closed. As a follow-up, will you ask for either a purchase price for that, so that we can understand?
After this meeting, anyway, so let's go. So we're going to get a kind of lease-to-over buyout price also. And I think that's it for finances.
Okay. We are on to communications, which I believe is simply the family letter. Yep, the family letter, we want just an update, Dr. Smith, and our incentive call to you. And then the second one, as it relates to the testing processes that we are going to sign for all of them for this year. And I think we should work hard on that. I'll pass the floor to Mrs. Kelly.
Welcome back, everyone. Looking forward to a successful 2022 school year. I'll start off with enrollment. As you can see, we are picking back up our enrollment figures. We're at 4849 as of today. An additional seven children currently helping in 61 towns on a tuition basis coming to our subset of programs as well. And we've got seven pending registrations. I'd like to recognize all the hard work from custodians, the administrative assistants, our building technologists, food service staff, and entire Burgess staff for their hard work in preparing for this school year. Thank you to Jamie Gishard and Bethany Moulthing and some program staff for providing engaging reading opportunities for approximately 200 students. Thank you to Kathy Davies and the food service staff for providing over 12,000 meals to families over the summer. And thank you to Mrs. Mina for her continued hard work over the summer regarding health and safety initiatives. Next part is the staff changes. I'll notice that this is much larger than we've had in past years. So lots of changes. We've had some requirements, some resignations, a lot of new staff joining the ranks of Burgess. Changes of positions, I'll point out one, we have Jen Muller in here, and Jen's moved from third grade teacher to our library teacher. And we'll ask, as we do every year, to have our new staff come to our next meeting and we can help them introduce themselves to you. We have a couple of long-term substitute positions. And in addition to the SR1 position that Deb mentioned in her report that is still remains open, we have three care professional positions still open at this time. It's been an interesting hiring year, as it has been across most major districts. Opening day orientation and open house. As you know, tomorrow's the first day for grades 1 through 6. And that we will have kindergarten orientation, as you have proved last month, up in June, on Wednesday, September 1st. First day for kindergarten will be Thursday, 2nd. Preschool orientations will happen on 7 and 8 of September, with the first day for preschool on Thursday, the 9th. And open house for grades 1 through 6 will be virtually on Wednesday, September 15. Curriculum instruction and assessment. We do have embargo preliminary data in regard to open houses. As we do each and every year, we will have a, we will be looking and analyzing the data as grade level teams, and there will be a presentation at a future curriculum meeting. Preschool in grade, in grade 3 will be implementing the Montez Wilson Foundation program during kindergarten, kindergarten grade 1 and 2. Kindergarten in grade 2 will be implementing the GEO intervention program. Two grade 6 teachers will be piloting the lead to math program, and that's on one side of cover. The other six grade teachers across Union 161 and to June High pilots that will be taking place. Burgess will be using the DESI guide in regard to improving and enhancing our multi-tier system of support. Running across the course of our curriculum continues to be a focus. And benchmark assessments will be administered at all grade levels during the month of September and early October. Technology, the hard work that we've put into getting devices and the kids and children has to be very successful. And we, at this point in time, have maximum access to all students. Health and safety, as parents, we are excited, you're a parent. You didn't receive my communication last night. Just go over a couple of highlights, but I will ask Lisa to just speak about some of the quarantining and testing in a little bit more detail. So as you know, DESI has required a whole test of person education as well as masking, while we endorse. Distal, physical distancing will be followed with the SINT guidance in regard to bringing in. We have the ability to do that seamlessly here. We will do that as we start off this school year. There are no masking or distancing required for all children in our home rooms. So that means recess, that we know full boarding and recess as well, that we'll be able to interact with children from other home rooms. We would have encouraged all of our teachers to maximize our outside space for all of our opportunities, mask breaks and things like that. So we will encourage, we will continue to encourage and support that. Quarantining and close contact, Lisa, as well as COVID testing. Do you want to briefly speak about that?
Yes, so this year, we are testing.
Lisa, if you want to make a contribution.
I just heard something about that. Just took a minute. This year, I decided, we have three testing options, that are for staff or students at school. And regardless of send-up program, I got supplies today to start. So the first one is for symptomatic individuals, which I'm excited about. Anybody that's going to be tested at school must have a signing consent. Otherwise, we can't do it, we won't do it. The first one is for symptomatic. We need people to stay long if they're not feeling well, continue to keep the kids on if they're sick or have symptoms. But if a child is vomiting and starts coughing, or has got a sore throat, or simple's during the school day, and they have a consent signed, then I'm allowed to assess them and do a rapid test. It's the binational test. They take 15 minutes. And then we would call them here to tell them, this is what we see, you know, test is negative. And then we would call them here to tell them, this is what we see, you know, test is negative, we're going to try to stay. Certainly if they have a fever or other symptoms that we know would send them home for, we can have that choice. So that, I think, is a nice option. The second one is test and stay. And that means if your child is considered to be in close contact during exposure at school, we would notify you as a parent. They could return to school each day, but they would have to come to the health office each morning to be tested, fifteen minutes negative test, no symptoms, they go back to class. So that eliminates some of the quarantine that we had to do last year. And then the school testing last year, you know, this routine COVID safety test. So if you sign up for that, last year, we had quite a group of people involved in it. So every third week, a certain group would be tested. We can test them a lot then if people are interested. And that means that you, the child would come down, they can test themselves with a nasal swab, but only goes about a half inch. K to twelve can do it to themselves. And we've chosen the testing option where they would take one swab, move it around their nose four times on your side, put that in a big tube, and then take another swab, do the same thing, and put it in a small tube every morning. Those get picked up and taken to the lab, they're lost in. And if that pool of five to ten swabs is positive, right then, they can take the individual ones out and test to find out who the positive individuals were. So that eliminates the children having to test again. So we would be notifying all of those afterwards, you know, when you test them, if you have a consent for your child. Home tests are available now and we're not allowed to use the results for those. We have to return to school. They cost some money, so we're doing that to do that, you know, with this to try to get the kids back to school. We have to have a copy from a testing facility on CPS. As far as updates, isolation and quarantine from last year, the isolation period, if you're positive for COVID, is still ten days. And then if you're point by receipt or free, symptoms much improved, you can go back to all public activities. As far as the close contacts now, there's a couple of options. If you don't want to have your child tested, they would stay home for ten days. We have the option of after the exposure, they stay home for five days, watch their health, get tested on day five. Then watch their health if it's negative for two more days and they're feeling great, they can return to school on day eight and all their activities. If the exposure happens at school, we have the test and stay option. We're not allowed to use that for they're exposed, you know, at a family gathering or at a soccer game or baseball game, girl scout meeting. So it's just for school-based educators who got time to test. Unboxing, native close contacts, can I go through that quarantine for the ten? And again, the close contacts are considered to be within three feet, so closer than three feet for more than fifteen minutes in a twenty-four hour period. So we're not quarantining your classrooms anymore. It's just the individuals directly close to you and outside is not counted as exposure. Does anybody have any questions?
So beautiful. I'm sorry. Just if there's questions, comments instead of, that's okay, because they come from the board. Yes, for the close contact, so within three feet, within twenty-four hours, obviously in school, but so that's with a mask on, obviously, since it's a mask.
Yeah, so masks, for many of us, they reduce it. So it's closer than three feet, so three feet is a marker. And for more than fifteen minutes in a twenty-four hour period. So we would be looking at the neighbors to a bunch of snack time, depending on what we do in the class.
And if we don't send our child tested and they are, let's say, worst case scenario, they have to stay home for ten days, are those excused absences or are we doing about the loss of education for those two days?
We would have makeup work, not much of a community access for our house.
So the work with these general teachers, you get worksheets or with their family online?
No, we need them to be packaged worksheets, much like with the private.
So they're not excused.
There's no referral learning option if you're sick?
Okay.
We would definitely make a note on a health record. So we'd be seeing that there was contact for at least ten days contact if you are, you know, absolutely. So that would be considered. But we can't run their absences.
Thank you. We have a question. Can I ask you to get them off here? Yeah, just introduce yourself.
Oh, my great, and my question is, so if you're in school and you're in close contact, you can test and stay. But what's the reasoning why if you're out of school and you're in close contact, you are not allowed that option?
At this point, always test them often, but there's some of that fee involved. You know, the twenty-five, you know, the five, so the rapid test. So everyone in the.
Lisa, can you repeat that? I can't hear you with us. That's okay. I think.
Sorry, what I'm saying is, this is a question on why they're using for all of these, this is the sort of that is the goal of the testing options. The government is funding it, so this is their rules. And there's some of that fee that comes with the census as a surprise. So they would have to sue us if we're on the.
So it's a funding situation?
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
I'll go back to next on my list is the ventilation facilities component to our operation. We will continue with the enhanced ventilation practices that we had last year. We will be cleaning each curb. We will be doing high intensity that we had last year. We will have one third cleaning a day unless there is a case, a COVID case, but we do that as practice anyways. If there's a, you know, a lot of flu or cold in the classroom, always setting an extra third cleaning of those spaces. We will continue to recommend you would clean hygiene, whether it's soap and water or a hand sanitizer. Keeping in mind, folks, we have a very decreased incidence of the common cold, regular flu, infections and otherwise. So we're just going to continue some of the practices that kept us healthy throughout, kept children healthy throughout the year. Special subjects, we'll travel to the classroom as we did at the end of the year. Lunch is a little bit different. We're not going to serve in the classrooms. We're going to serve in the cafeteria. For kindergarten through grades three and in the upper gym for four through six, add a sunny seating so that we can't crush that trace. Recession, as I said before, will be without any restrictions. Student belongings, students will be using their lockers and their puppies this year. School events at this moment are on hold, but will be revisited at certain benchmarks in time. We will have banning quarters. Visitors and volunteers at this moment are on hold, but will be revisited as we hit certain benchmarks. Burgess extended day program will be operating. Last year, as you recall, we had much limited and low participation per our ability to. To do so, we will have it open a little bit to a little bit more larger population, but enrollment at this time is closed. So are there any questions?
Why are we still banning visitors and volunteers if they have to be matched anywhere?
That was a decision that we made as a leadership team for Tantash with Union sixty-one for this time.
Just to get schools going. That was really our feeling is we had some students who were coming to school for the first time. We actually talked about this prior to a mandate, which is why Kathy said go revisit it. We have a leadership team meeting actually September, but we will kind of get feedback.
Okay, if you're still listening to me, but I strongly encourage we allow that. That's a really important part of our school community. You know, there's been a lot of visitor volunteer opportunities that have been missed dearly and we love our community.
And we agree wholeheartedly. As Dr. Nozick said, we'd like to get through the point in time in which, you know, we're X number of weeks outside of travel time and things like that and then revisit it based on data, we'll make a decision.
And then a second follow-up question to Lisa, and I know that there's other questions, is, and it's not as applicable here. However, are school, exposure at school events still eligible for test and stay? And I know your role in the whole Union sixty-one, so I guess my question, you could hypothetically say, is a junior high soccer player gets exposed on a bus, is that considered a school exposure and can they be part of the test and stay program?
So I was thinking to this community, but any school sponsored events I consider, you know, they could do the test.
Thank you. Can I just go back because I actually.
Sorry, before I clarify that, so.
I'm sorry, before you came in, so you just have to be recognized. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Daniel Stern. I just wanted to clarify the out-of-school exposure during school events for testing. So hypothetically, if it happened in the evening, then the child could still do the test at school the following day?
It was like a school concert or a school sponsored event. We don't have school sponsored sports at this point.
Yes. Thank you. If I could just quickly go back because there was some items that I missed on my principal's report. I just want to speak to the facilities because Dr. Nozick had mentioned the great work done in collaboration with the highway department. Something that was wanted was some hinging of the walk. It would be sixteen buses when the school was designed, it wasn't intended. So there was an area that was slippery in the winter and so through a grant, Bush Jackson was able to secure thirty-five thousand dollars of funding to get the walk from the entrance here all the way down to the gates and thank them. Food service, as I said, from what we were doing for lunch, we're getting here. The menu will be, as you've probably seen already, the very menu that we've had typical to pre-COVID times. Lunch will be free per federal mandate for all students. Breakfast is available and free of charge, but you received a form last week to lock out if you so chose to. Professional development, we have a packed day early release on Monday, September sixteenth. There's lots of initiatives happening, so we have a lot to do as far as our professional development and school COVID council. Well, the first meeting will be on the day September fifteenth. So questions on the report?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you. What benchmarks were you speaking to where volunteers and visitors, parents, you know, went to your concerts when or what benchmarks were you speaking to?
We'll look at transmission within the community in general.
But I guess I'm looking for us as a specific number, timeframe maybe.
Well, it's Dr. Nozick's. We'll be meeting on September ninth.
September ninth.
Yeah, and decision was really the focus of DESI to really afford that. Let's get the school up and then absolutely revisit again with required masking. That is a very different scenario for sure. So I suspect that it would be a very, the hype on the agenda conversation that early. And then we'll just confirm for a moment.
As Ms. Roy mentioned, we rely heavily on the support of our volunteers. We get through our PTH, just in terms of helping get a lot of tests. And, you know, we understand and we appreciate if people want to be here, we want that here as well.
Just a quick question. Monday is September sixteenth, Monday. Well, September sixteenth is a Thursday. I can look at the calendar. Is it Monday, the thirteenth or am I nuts?
Sixteenth, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I just. I can, you know, I still have paper dates. I got an update on paper. You're racing. I think that there was another question that I saw this session, the basketball rules.
They've been put down, the ones outside?
Right, that was a COVID thing.
They were given directive to put them down instead of.
Put them down, meaning put them back up?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Install, allow play. Tomorrow. Seven days before shop. Were there other questions on Ms. Kelly's principals' report? And I also would like to thank the DPW for donating that. That's a great thing. I know personally from the junior high as well that, you know, we've seen people walking more than we ever have on our school grounds all over the district. And it's really nice to see the work about these things. All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I also just to reiterate what Ms. Kelly said, thank everybody for all their hard work this summer to get us ready for children tomorrow and our group of our faculty and staff that day. StudENTS and admin support and administrators who worked throughout the year all summer, really appreciate that. As well as all the faculty and staff who come in over the summer to help with here. So look forward to having another really truly great, great year. We appreciate everybody's hard work. We welcome, and as you can tell, we have a faculty's report, over fifty new faculty staff. We do dig, as we always do, with new staff, faculty orientation, well over fifty people, lots of positive energy. People very excited and that's K to twelve for our six districts. We're really excited. So we're delighted with the new staff that we have hired. And I want to thank the town and Bush Jackson for the brand. If you recall, a very substantial amount of money from the town went into the hyonizers for this COVID last year. Their CERZAC money, I think it was up seventy thousand, almost eighty thousand all put together. So very, very appreciative of that. And just to give you an update on homeschooling numbers, last year, this was one of our, you probably had the DESI removed option and then fully removed option, neither of which, although the DESI is certainly something if somebody chooses to really want to be approved virtually schools, that's a whole separate process where those children, those has approved the school choice measure for that. But the homeschooling numbers, we had twenty-four first time new folks, new children last year. Fourteen have been confirmed to have re-enrolled and coming back. Ten, we don't have a confirmation, so it's not that, they might indeed come tomorrow to re-enroll. But what we don't have is a request to homeschool issue. So we are working with families, trying to reach out to them so that we can get a commitment of where they're going to be. And we have six new children as of today who will be homeschooled. So kind of just keeping our eyes on overall in the moment where we are. But a number of folks who was last year, they will be returning N D right now, they're fourteen, they'll be twenty-four children. I know we also had a conversation about Old Service Academy and Charter School, a conversation that we ended in June. I never did hear back from the Office of Charter School Director, we have had an email that says the town will be assessing on the view of first data, that number. But we'll see what we can do. All right, I printed it on my desk because they said it was not going to be assessed to the town. We will want to do those.
I knew you were out last week to ask for the latest from our town. I haven't heard that yet. So hopefully in a couple of days.
Yep. We should have a good update for you by the September.
October, I'm sorry, October. I mean, August, I mean, this is the September meeting. And then finally, just a bit of housekeeping. We did include the standing meetings for the school year. Obviously, things could change and that. And such, we sent all of those to the court, the town clerk to be posted. We not only always send them standing meeting dates, but then of course we post them typically as we need to with the town clerk. But those are the dates to. Thank you for that. All right, we'll look forward to another great year. Appreciate everyone's support.
Okay, here are public access. Just to reiterate, if you can just be recognized, everybody that wants to contribute has three minutes to do so. I'd just appreciate if you would, you know, raise your hand. I'll recognize you, introduce yourself, as is typical on any typical town meeting or municipal meeting, we go by Robert's rules, three minutes. And if there's something that requires a follow-up, I might direct administration to have a follow-up conversation. Sometimes these things may require counsel, may require additional research, et cetera, et cetera, as is common with hot topics and public access. So I'll open up public access. Go ahead. And I actually am only using my phone for time markers to keep us on.
I will take three minutes.
Do you want microphone or not?
I don't think so.
You're good.
My name is Christina Fortune. I have, Ethan is going in fifth grade, April's going to kindergarten. And my question is about bus group. Last year, it's had assigned seating in the bus. I think my grade number, my kindergarten is a little bit nervous. And so I was just wondering if my fifth grader and kindergarten can sit together or will they separate it?
Good question. I'm going to ask Ms. Boyd maybe to.
To answer that. We do what we do as in the past pre-COVID term, as you would know, we sort of allow the bus drivers to be described and step how the seating is done. I am sure if you reach out to them, send an email tonight or speak to the driver in the morning, they will allow them to sit together. Okay, Lucy getting acclimated in kind of a, he may want to not sit with his brother.
How many say like each other?
The older children definitely love being towards the back because obviously we want the younger children in the front for supervision. So I'm sure he can talk to the D.
I would be shocked if there's a driver who doesn't want to let two siblings sit together.
And it might be just a couple of days, a Christmas party.
Yeah.
And I mean, speaking of that, I do think that they are actually starting out with assigned seats and kind of keeping the seat listing the way they did last year. Again, some of it is for bus drivers' comfort as well as everyone's. That may open up after a couple of weeks because, you know, as you said, as long as we've got the windows cracked and the masks on, they won't be close contacts. But they're so used to knowing where every student is in case asked, they're probably going to start off that way and then we'll lose them.
Okay, quick question, follow-up. Will there be a bus buddy program ever, like what we've done before?
Yeah, I think there will be. It was actually a little bit of a big deal last year.
Next question, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Chase Kaminski, I'm led to talk about the mask mandate to the state. I realize that it is nobody in this room that is advocating that, but I wanted to share my thoughts and maybe how you're aware. And I don't know how the majority of your board feels, but I would like to see your board petition this to the state with an attorney. We'll follow the rules because I think it's so sad that the state is threatening to cut funding. Because I want to make something very clear to everybody in this room. You control the funding in town meeting for this budget. I would like to see this board petition to the state with a lawyer. We just spent $15,000 to have a trailer for the bus drivers. I would like to see some money go over to the attorney.
As a follow-up to that. As a follow-up to that, there's already been some discussion with council as to what we can legally do. We're still trying to find out what we can legally do. And I don't know if Sarah, because. Point taken, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, right here, all right.
Hi, my name is Jenna Ventituo, and I have two boys in hold at Burgess. I need to speak quickly because I have a lot to say and not enough time to say it. I'm going to challenge a committee to reject DESI mandates, but I'll come back to that. Mask policy from last October needs to be rescinded. No student should face punitive measures for not wearing a mask. And I shouldn't have to jump over who's to get an exemption for my five-year-old to move his mask to communicate and for speech therapy when his speech therapist is at Burgess. There should also be a religious exemption to any future mask policy. It is allowed for vaccines, which is a medical intervention, and it shouldn't be allowed for masks, which is also a medical intervention. Religious freedoms are protected by the U.S. Constitution and mask law. DESI is claiming exigent circumstances exist, and that is how they're justifying these mandates. If you support these mandates and you owe it to the community, tell us what the exigent circumstances are. I don't want to hear we're following the science. I want real numbers and real data. Burgess had over 240 students and staff at the school for summer programs. Vaccines status unknown and masks optional. There were no known cases of COVID transmission. If you don't reject DESI mandates today, then your hands will be tied and your decision-making powers will be stripped away. The committee recognizes that ultimate responsibility for public education rests with the state, but individual school committees have been assigned specific authority through state law. The committee will not relinquish any of this authority since it leaves decision-making control for children's heart, which can enhance local citizens as much as possible. The burden of proof of exigence rests with DESI. Make them legally prove it, otherwise our kids will be masked indefinitely and are off-rank reinforced vaccinations. My seven-year-old played lacrosse this spring. When masks were finally allowed to be taken off, he didn't. He didn't recognize most of his teammates because he had never seen their faces. If this doesn't alarm you, I don't know what will. I know a lot of parents who feel the same way I do, but most of them don't have the courage to say them to the school yet. I promise that if we continue to follow these legally issued mandates, the number of outspoken parents will continue to grow. My expectations are actually pretty low for today. Unfortunately, I don't think many people have the strength and courage to challenge DESI and the NTA, even if you know it's the right thing to do. Decisions for Burgess should be made by Burgess, not an elected official who's tied mask removal to an 80% vaccination rate. We were fooled into 15 days of lack of herd 531 days ago. Don't be fooled into thinking anything will change on October 1st. Our kids are captive now. Thank you, and even though I'm completely terrified to speak in public, as you can tell, I'm here every month, fighting for my kids.
Thank you. Lisa, could you actually, it would be great if you could actually share, because I know we had a very successful summer program here and our local data was fantastic. Could you share what the current data is now? Well, that, like the Burgess case data from the summer? I just want to make sure that we have the numbers.
So you also work with what else, I don't know if you can say to do that, outside school hours? So from July 1st until August 14th, we had six cases positive and served under 12. But I can tell you as of today, we have 17 students who are having ability to start because they either are positive COVID or they're feeling members are, or they're considered close contact, so I have to quarantine. Is that what you're looking for?
I was looking for it, actually. Thank you. That's a question. Yeah, sure. How many are hospitalized? Okay, there was another hand up. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Daniel Stern. I also have two students in school, more are going into third grade tomorrow, a marathon, going into kindergarten. Do not have anything prepared. I will speak from the heart, though. I strongly support the mask mandate. My children and my mother, my mother is immunosuppressed. She's had a heart transplant, kidney transplant, two-stage four cancers. They're, my children have not seen their grandma and my mother in almost two years because people refuse to follow the science of transmission of the mask. I may or may not stand up here and cry because it's difficult for me. I recognize your opinions, I support your opinions. I also support the science of seeing the changes in terms of a decrease in social distancing, allowing masks outside. I don't think that it's too difficult to teach our children to support others, to support the health of others. As far as I'm concerned, it was meant to be civic-minded, treating others with respect and the health of others and recognizing that is a civic duty. I would be strongly against using my tax dollars to pay an attorney to challenge the state. Particularly since my brother's attorney says he has a little like to stand on. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Another contributor? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chau. I have a child in Burgess, I have a child in junior high, and I have a child in high school. My high schooler last year, who's here tonight with me, plays football and had to wear masks during football. I don't know if anybody has had to try to breathe heavily and do any kind of physical activity, go to the gym, go to CrossFit, go to any place where garden outside with your mask on and try to breathe heavily without it sucking down your throat. This year, masks outside are, that's okay. But inside, where he does weightlifting with all the other guys, or anytime it's raining outside, they have to practice inside, they'll be wearing a mask. Try to lift weights, 100 pounds with a mask on and it not go down your throat. He is so upset about this that he's told he's a great student in the tech and really hates school. Along with my middle schooler, who is an A student, and school's no longer fun. School is now a thing that they just have to go do. They can't socialize with their friends. They have to stay socially distanced. In the lunchroom in the junior high last year, they were facing each other's backs. They couldn't even face each other. They couldn't see their friends' faces. They can't, you know, just be kids. My Burgess kid is sixth grade this year and she's, you know, just learning how everybody else is looking around each other. And I'm against the masks. I second the lawsuit. I second the dad on being against the mask mandates. And I did have a question, follow-up to the protocol for the DESI and the testing. If I have a child in Burgess, I have a child in the junior high, and I have a child in the high school. If all three of them were to become close contacts with anybody, they would all have to quarantine tendings? And what if it happened at different times? Now, one of my children, there was 30 days of school because they had a contact at three different times and they're not excused accesses?
Go ahead, Lisa. And if you need to research and come back to it, I can take down information. No, it's okay. It's like every time you go to speak to them.
If they're close contact, so you have children who were close contact in a classroom at school? They're going somewhere, they're still coming to school, so close contacts does not affect the rest of the family? So is it a likely different situation depending what the contact was? Does that make sense?
So if my Burgess kid was the contact at school and came home and was quarantined for 10 days, my junior high and my high school kids can still go to school?
Yeah, that's a contact for a contact.
That's another way.
So your other children would be considered close contacts, all the close contacts of the quarantine would not apply? And that's how it functions all last year.
And if one child became a close contact three different times during the year and they had to stay home and quarantine for 10 days, what does the school plan do with those 30 days of the school?
We're hoping they're just in a present, like in the test. And if you come to school every day. So we don't want to watch each other, and if anything happens, we do those, do those.
Thank you, Lisa. I have a question, I still have my phone. Yeah, go ahead. What is the accuracy of the BiNex now for asymptomatic people?
I don't know, I have a percentage. I know that we use models to know why they're doing PCRs and they improve that they are rewriting the test. The only time that we have concern is if we get, say, I'm a symptomatic student with a fever, with a cough, and I test them here at school and it's negative. I have to be comfortable with reading a room now for another couple of tests. So we're more worried about the false negatives.
Because I know, last I checked, the BiNex now is 35% accurate for asymptomatic patients. Thank you. Go ahead.
It's a little priority. So if the test is negative, we're going to require another test, but if it's positive, what's required after that?
I believe it's a 10-day, 10-day isolation.
So if they tested negative, you're saying it's going to be another test or another type of test is being done?
I believe there's symptomatic.
Would there be no test? Why not?
So if I, like I said, I assume with a fever and a coughing and a congestion and I tested them with the BiNex and it was negative, I would prefer them to be given a vision to determine, it could be a sinus infection, it could be something else. And we may decide to test them with a different type of test. That's where it has happened for me so far. Your other question?
If they were positive, why would they, would there be another test to confirm the positive?
What we're being told is that they're already reliable. I have only question a false negative. That can happen also with, so say, somebody in your family is positive for COVID. Family gets nervous, they're going to say, was that to get tested? Sometimes you can test too soon as well. So we guys already recommend a five-day test after the soldier, because no one really knows who the right to test who.
I guess what I'm asking is, if it affects one way, negative, why would it be equally as high quality?
I can try to find another service, see where you can have this.
Thank you, Lisa. And I'll also just make sure everybody understands Lisa's answer from, you know, she works for the town department of health and has been working tirelessly for the district, so she might have a great answer. And I think that we need to give her the opportunity to go ahead. Let me just see, if there's somebody else that wants to contribute, then I'll come back to you, okay? Was there somebody else that wanted to contribute before we repeat? Go ahead.
So again, sorry to reiterate, but so if there can be a false negative, a lot of false positive? I'm sorry, I've got to. And that makes sense to everybody?
Okay. Is there any more public access? Go ahead.
Yeah, Brenda, I have two kids here, third and fifth grade. And if we're following the science, which I would agree with, I think that we all know that kids are not getting infected at a rate and as much as adults, especially elderly. And when they are infected, it's not as bad. The science we don't have, though, is when you are masking kids all day long and how are they affected by that? Especially in school when they're trying to learn things like reading and they need to see what the teacher is doing and how their teacher's face is moving. And how they learn social cues from other kids. I think we don't have the science on that and we are experimenting with our kids. And I think it's very important that we don't do that. And as Mr. Kaminski said, I think we need to fight this legally and use all the funds that we have. Because I don't want to experiment, don't lie to kids with this anymore. We did it for a whole year and it's too dangerous, I think.
Thank you, Matt. Other contributor? Go ahead.
My name is Peter. I have two children. And I really just have a question. Is it possible to vote, you know, on the mask mandate? Because, you know, or at least even the parents, if that's something that's happening and if so, how would that happen? You know, and who would vote on it, on what they want? Whatever the outcome is with this, with the outcome.
What I can tell you is that early on, DESI came down in early July with direction that they were going to strongly encourage masks. We've discussed with our building principal, with the administration, with the school nurse, who's also part of the Department of the Board of Health. What made sense for us locally? We don't have the ability to change the mandate or direct our administration legally as the elected officials that you see before you to go against what DESI has done. Commissioner Riley went before the Board of Education, which is appointed by, they're all appointed. They're not, to my knowledge, they're not elected. They're appointed by Baker. So the fight is really up there with them. We, if we go against the mandate and we actually, you know, take, there's no mechanism by way to take a vote at a town meeting or call a special town meeting because it doesn't change that the Department of Early and Secondary Education has given this mandate. And if we go against it, they can strip the school of their administrators, they can strip the school of their funding. And that is like, I understand that it sounds like an empty threat, but it's what we actually signed up for to uphold as school members. So while I can disagree with masks all day, I don't have on a mask. My kids don't have, I have four kids, they're all going to different schools tomorrow. There's not a mechanism by which we can just take a vote and call a special meeting for that because it's guidance given to us. Private schools, they can do what they want to do, but we're a public school system and we're bound by what DESI dictates to us, basically. I don't know if either any of our administration has anything available to add to that? No, we are obligated to follow the regulation and the statute. So what happens if we only offer a 80% vaccination rate between students and staff, then what? Because I'll tell you, I'm not masking my kids till they graduate. And I'm sure a lot of people feel the same way. So I feel like there's no off-ramp, there's no end in sight for this. And I'm not saying that we should, well, I just think the power should reside in Burgess. And that is why I'm against DESI's guidelines because their exigent circumstances don't apply here. And if they did, that's completely different. So that's why I'm advocating to push back against DESI and to establish some type of exemptions or different combinations. Because there's no reason I should be able to order a restaurant with my kids and sit for nine hours when they can't sit at a desk without a mask on. That makes absolutely zero sense. There's no reason that our kids have to sit in masks all day. But we can choose here whether or not we have a mask on. Doesn't make sense. But I appreciate your explanation. Other public access? Thank you. And I appreciate everybody's contributions. We've received some very thoughtful emails, phone calls, personal phone calls, emails, quite a few, actually. We're volunteers. Again, there's times that we have to do things and we don't necessarily personally believe in as well. So, I'm going to go ahead and close public access. And we are on to subcommittee reports. Follow that.
No meeting, no report.
No meeting, no report. Okay. We are then, well, let's take our unfinished business. I don't know why people would want to stick around as we go over these twenty-two policies.
Do you have a?
I got it.
They're all unfinished.
Yeah.
Which means we did it for three, every year is done, because every week is like ten years of this. If anyone wants me to review any of them again, I'm not teaching. Otherwise, we're just looking for second reading and adoption, our votes that we voted back in the lead of June, I'm going to guess it's June.
So, I was just going to enter, what I was planning on doing, definitely, entertaining a motion that we amend on second reading and adopt policies FA, FFGA, GBA, GBEA, GBGB, GBI, GCBB, GCE, GCU, GCJ, GCRD, and GDV. So, we can knock those off with a motion to adopt. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion on those fourteen policies I just wrote down? Let's talk about it. All in favor? Okay. So, that is through GDV. The others are to rescind, I have an entertaining motion to rescind policy FA-E, FB, GBED, GBJC, GCD, GCL, GCO-R, GCQA, GDBC, GDK. Those are to rescind. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on those? All in favor? Okay. Those have now been, okay, so we have new business, which has pretty much been discussed.
I don't know if there were any questions on the files.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, the guidance that you attached in the family communication was the implementation of Desi mask requirement.
Yep.
We have on our policy that we adopted back in October, July twenty, EBCFA.
What is your?
So, I have grave concerns about, I can't say this, but I would rather go with what you've attached and go with Desi's policy, because I feel as though EBCFA is extremely prescriptive and much tighter than the Desi policy. So, I wanted to see if we were entertaining a motion to rescind the policy EBCFA and just go with what you've attached in the family communications, because I guarantee you, no parent knows EBCFA. They all know what the communication is and there's been so much focus and spotlight on that, that I feel it's actually being disingenuous that we go with this policy. And other than Shana Betatulo, who looked up our policy and saw the disciplinary action, which, again, you know, this was in a time when we were under the impression that there was a legitimate threat of extreme illness in our schools. And so, I obviously was part of this, but I don't want to feel like I'm going to be more into that policy and to see.
So, your motion is to rescind, I don't have the letters on it, so to rescind the face mask policies, I have it in front of me for a second minute. So, your motion then, let me just sort through this, is to rescind the face mask policy and replace with Desi guidance?
Whatever this is, the implementation of Desi mask requirement, that it says effective immediately, based upon, I'm sure the mask should cover the nose and mouth, but the more information it shows, the more cartoony picture that he wants to strongly recommend to students by, by also, and then it's.
Well, I need a motion in a second, so I'm just trying to understand the motion. Yeah, so don't comment, we have a motion in a second. So, we have a motion to rescind.
Policy EBCFA.
EBCFA. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
So, our thought, we have a couple of thoughts, because we absolutely think there's a couple of areas. We came up, as Kristen's reading, like, we came in with the plan to suggest changes in two or three places, specifically eliminating that, the remote, this reference to remote word that no longer exists. And a couple of others that everyone can refer to. The other, so we absolutely agree there's some areas that we need to tweak, the current one. If, aside from those tweaks, in turn, what was the other one area? It was.
It was the answer that, you're right, it talks about any facility or area of the school campus now, so longer required. So, we know there are some areas for sure, the remote learning as an option doesn't exist, it's not happening at school, so we need that. We did talk about the mask being worn, whether of what we had laid out was indeed what the guidance is, and I think it actually threw that window, it was pretty darn close to that. And the consequence part, we did put, we thought discipline would be progressive per the administrative practice, which is what we do for everything, because the discipline, if you will, and that's such a bad word, but to make sure children understand that it is something that we need to do, there are the two exceptions for the Bureau of Health, which actually last year were put in place for some of our, you know, fragile children who stopped us at the exam. So, a lot of it is the same, so I don't know if.
I just don't know if another, if you prefer, we can either tweak the things we just talked about, or we could, not so much rescind, but wipe out everything other than a statement. So, we keep the policy there, but a statement that refers to this document that we agreed to follow, to implement the mask requiring per Desi direction on August twenty-fifth and have that. I mean, we could cut and paste the whole, like, this just isn't like a policy for us, but we could just put a paragraph that refers to it in the policy and to.
Did we create this or was this?
Which one is everybody looking at? I have Unit sixty-one district's face mask.
We created that last year.
This is what you're talking about recently.
We, like, this is like, like I said, it's very detailed and prescriptive, almost like it came from, like, is this shared amongst other school administrators and then we approached it?
I don't recall where it came from firsthand, my guess would be that it was.
I think the high level department came from Desi. And then during, during negotiations last year with the MOA, there was a number of things, which probably the detailed things probably came out of the negotiations process last year. And then we put that down. So, that is the document that's district-wide. In fact, I think that, hopefully Kristen has, is there the italicized piece, because there was a lot of conversation about the younger students. So, that kind of was homewrote, at least to our readers. So, we did do that. And again, we absolutely can create a policy from this guideline, we have to come back to, I mean, just, if you voted rescind and live by this, we can.
Develop a policy.
Yeah, or not come back to, as long as you're on record saying this is what we are directly.
Yes, I want this scrapped until we can, we want to spend more time finessing it at future date line. I prefer it covered by this right now, because it's a little more open and the language is a little more friendly in terms of.
It's correct. I mean, it talks about the shift into fully remote.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I guess that we need to clean up the motion, because the motion is to rescind this, but the, like, amended motion, I believe, would be to rescind policy EBCFA, I can't read my own writing, and replace with the guidance given by Desi as policy until a new policy is created.
So, what are we going to do if?
Well, that's going to immediately replace it with this. So, it's rescind and replace.
Yes. The Department of Ed says that that discipline, where is it? Is a local decision and it's progressive discipline.
So, I'll give you an example of what happened last year on various regulations. We would, the teacher would take, initially, ask the child to put a mask on, we were asked to communicate with families if they had to do so, we talked about this today, saying what we'll do moving forward. We'll give them to work with, advise it, that Lisa has agreed to actually see them at a fourth time, who have masks in mind, if it's not being adhered to, and then it will be a conversation with the administration and, you know, a call. But parents will be notified all along the way that there's a need for the request to put masks back on and then we'll decide whether we will. I just, I don't foresee it being a problem, it's a very common issue last year.
I know, well, it could be unfortunate, I know, but we didn't, we know that, that's why we're thinking we manage it, I guess, this is what fathers and moms have their instincts.
The only thing about this that I'm going to just say, where it says after October twenty twenty-one, if a school demonstrates a vaccination rate, I also don't necessarily want to vary it further, but I guess that if we're talking about this in the spirit of rescind and replace while developing a new, Union sixty-one or a Sturber School District policy, this would then, if we're living by this and this changes, I guess that we, it's just, it's a little bit of a.
It's fluid, I know, and I'm going to tell you right now that I would predict that we won't be at eighty percent, anywhere within the Union sixty-one. So, we need to think about how are we going to write a policy that creates an off-ramp, that we are not in mask for, that our kids are going to be, they're retired.
Health choices. Which that I understand, but that, that's if eighty percent lives, and we don't know, I mean, I think the language was, would revisit or, you know, whatever he said. We could never create a policy that says we're not going to follow that, if that's the regulation. That's all I'm saying, is we can't create ever policy that's illegal. We can certainly have a policy that enhances the Desi regulations, some schools will go to school for one hundred and eighty-five years from the Desi regulations and then one eighty, you can do that. You can never, or we could never support violating a statute of regulation, that's just not what we can do.
It's not a statute of regulation. It's a mandate, I mean, it's a law. So, that's the other.
It's a regulation, it'll be blamed, the decision of the requirements through the structured learning time, the time learning regulation. So, my suggestion might be, and I don't, as far as motion goes, is that we look to your, I don't think you can even choose off what that Desi guidance says versus, if you want to work on adopting the policy, we can certainly do it as soon as possible. I don't know what the schedules are, we can be virtual by order, the governor says, we can be at ten AM, maybe eight AM, you know, whatever might work for people and say, what is it that, like, this item and what is it for this? But a component would certainly be some mechanism where the administration is able to require what the regulation needs us to require. That's what I think is my question about that.
Because at the end of the speaker, you're requiring there's some survey that you did. What is that?
The survey is a simple acknowledgement that you understand that I'm complying with the regulation.
You just check yes and send it back?
That's a lot of.
They don't ask you for, they don't want to say, they don't want to say something in your policy, because from talking with other school members in other towns, this is our, this one that we have is like light years, nobody has this, and that's why I'm like, where did this come from?
Well, sure that came from, well, the legal references. Yep, the Commonwealth of Masks, the references, CDC, consideration for wearing masks, CDC.gov, Mask Department of Ed reopening guidelines, Commonwealth of Masks, Mask, Mask Up, and then the source, actually, the template, it says the source of this is from the MASC and School Review Association.
Yeah, I think that that came as a, also, Kristen, through that lengthy negotiation process, this came as a result, there were some templated ones that the chairs took on due to time constraints and whatnot to get us back to school.
This is something that we're going to have to do, no matter, like, whatever Desi says no matter what, that you.
So, rescind and replace?
That's a, you know, that's a question, actually, that I'll ask our attorney, because if there was not a requirement for the state, then it would be up to you to determine a global, whether your policy or not. No, it's a really, it's a very good question.
Yeah, and again, to the point where we have to follow a this, this, we could do more, is how we ended up with a policy that said, yes, we actually do want the younger students to also wear them.
Encouraged. We did not, it was very much a part of that. So, we have a motion on the table to rescind EBCFA, to marry, why?
And follow this.
But follow the communication until we develop policy. So, is there any more discussion on that?
I need some clarity, because I'm not a hundred percent understanding regarding consequences. So, I guess I'd ask Kathy to say, do you feel like what it says creates kind of a progressive ability to adhere to the regulation within the Desi statute?
And then we can work on drafting a policy and we're looking for those things for the whole learning thing to cover.
So, I'm sorry. I'm sure everybody has seen that. I'm sorry, yeah, I guess another point on this with the mask requirement from Desi is also the most current Desi requirement, because if you see, they talk about masks are required for sports-related activities for student athletes and coaches when indoors, with guidance provided, if that changes, I guess that it is a little bit confusing if we just follow the mandates as they develop, because if this then changes, then we would change as well. We would be married to this or memorialized to the August twenty-fifth communication. So, it just becomes a little bit confusing. I guess that the motion is to rescind the current policy and to just follow current guidance and mandates as outlined by Desi, and current would be fluid. Is that the spirit of what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess we just need to work with that somehow. So, we are looking to rescind EBCFA and replace by following current recommended guided mask requirement guidance, Desi mask requirement.
Yes.
It's guidance.
It's a requirement.
Current Desi mask requirements. And current would be, it's current, well, current would be whatever it is, because this changes.
Because if they found something else within the nation, we.
All of a sudden, we have to wear masks in three weeks outdoor. Or the latest, that we would then give it to that.
Or if we follow the Desi mask.
Exactly.
The most current Desi mask requirement. So, I guess we need an amended motion.
Motion to rescind policy EBCFA into Lisa.
Following current Desi mask.
Current Desi mask.
Is there a second? Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? And that's all we have here. Okay, is there any other? Is there any other new business? There are none, I would entertain it. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Um, I just, I guess I kind of wanted to get a notion of how we're feeling. I, I know that this was already brought up, but would it be in our interest as a board, um, to take a vote, not necessarily a vote, I mean, I'm not a part of this, but to kind of, I want to write a letter as a, as a committee to Governor Baker, um, and I don't remember what the temperature of the report is here, um, to express my disagreement as a school committee member, um, in his decision to not step in when he left this mask mandate and the policy up to the local level. He then left it up to appointed individuals to make this decision. They're not elected officials, you see in Massachusetts, they're not elected officials in the town of Sturbridge, and I didn't know if the board would entertain you writing a letter to Baker questioning why he would do that, um, why he would support, uh, Coach Amari's decision, the board's decision, when he himself left it up to the local level at first. Um, I don't know if there's legal standing for that, I guess the board can support advice on that, but I would like, um, some sort of communication to go to Governor Baker, um, even if I have to do it as a school committee member myself, um, and not as a board, um, but that's just how I'm feeling, uh, that's how I feel that, uh, from what I've gathered from many phone calls and in multiple communications that I have received, both personal and official, um, I just, I don't know what the temperature of the board is and how we feel about writing a communication such as that, or if we have a potential to do so.
No, I, I don't think anything, I mean, we have freedom of speech, you can do anything that you want personally.
Correct.
And I, I mean, my suggestion would be that if that's how you feel, you should write your letter. Um, I don't know that we've ever taken a position other than, you know.
No, I mean, I think that there's, there's resolutions, um, that the committees have not.
But we would want to write it, develop it, present it, vote upon it, not just say, author a letter on our behalf. So I would say that if there is a resolution that you wanted to draft, to present for us to vote upon as new business in October, other than that, I think that you are in perfect standing to send it, probably more powerful in numbers anyway, um, as a school committee member and citizen. Yeah, I, I think we can ask about resolutions and whatnot, and, and need to come back and offer the best way to do that, especially, um, yeah. And, and that has been the practice, and just so you know, is that at least, um, Tantasca has done that, where they certainly, um, take positions individually, they have not made it most, because there are resolutions, sort of.
We've had conversations, there's certainly been proposals in the past where someone comes, even with a document already prepared, it says, you know, we'd like the committee to vote on supporting this, or, in most cases, they have not as a group, but highly individual individuals.
Yeah, and I think I've said things individually, um, but I don't think I've ever sent it as a, yeah, so, sorry.
No, that's okay.
No. Okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you.